Now 6 o'clock, we will open our February 28th Town Council meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we will now go on to public comment. At this point, we will ask those here in our audience if they would like to share any public comments. If you do come up to the podium, state your name and address, and please try and limit your comments to five minutes. After we're done with those here in attendance, we will go to anyone online who has an interest. Please just raise your hand if you'd like to ask a question. Is there anyone here in the audience who'd like to speak? Seeing none. Anyone online?
Seeing no hands online.
No hands online.
Going once, going twice, I think we're all set.
Okay, moving along to item D, public hearing.
The legal notice, Town of Farmington Public Hearing. A public hearing will be held on Tuesday, February 28th, 2023, at 6:00 PM in the Town Council chambers on the Town Manager's Proposed Seven-Year Capital Improvement Plan dated at Farmington, Connecticut, this 13th day of February 2023. Kathleen A. Blonsky, Town Manager.
Kathy.
Tonight, I am presenting the 23-24-29-30 Capital Improvement Program. The Capital Improvement Plan, CIP, is a planning document by which the Town of Farmington plans for the improvements it will undertake over the next seven years. For a project to qualify as a capital improvement, the cost of the item or project should be at least $25,000, and the improvement should have a useful life of at least five years. Equipment or projects which cost less than $25,000 or which have a useful life of less than five years do not qualify as a capital improvement and should be included as an expense in the operating budget. Although a capital improvement may have a recurring or ongoing operating expense related to its purchase or construction, that expense is not included in the CIP but is included in the operating budget. Projects in the CIP may be funded from a variety of sources: budget appropriations, bonding, a state or federal grant, or another source of funds referred to as other. Highlights of the Town of Farmington's capital improvement policy are as follows: The town will strive to maintain a high reliance on pay-as-you-go financing for its capital improvements. The town's objective will be to contribute at least 2.5% of the operating budget's annual general fund revenues to the capital improvement program. The capital improvement plan calls for the expenditure of $104,325,373 over the next seven years. Of this amount, $43,600,000 is proposed to be funded through appropriations from the general fund. Bonding authorizations totaling $51,43,373 are also proposed, and $9,682,000 are proposed from other funds. Fiscal year 23-24 CIP has a total cost of $40,104,373. Of this amount, $3,984,000 is proposed to be funded through the appropriations from the general fund; $28,93,373 through bonding; and $8,027,000 proposed from other funds. The town's capital improvement policy and the town's strategic plan were the policy guidelines that were in the forefront when formulating the CIP while focusing the appropriations into two main funding themes. These themes are equipment, infrastructure, maintenance improvements, and technology and communication initiatives. Equipment, infrastructure, maintenance, improvement summary: Each year in the capital budget, we strive to make steady progress in this area. There is a continuous need to maintain the town's equipment and infrastructure, and these needs touch all departments. Each department has equipment and replacement plans. The critical equipment keeps our volunteer firefighters safe when responding to calls for service. It allows our roads to be properly maintained by highway and ground staff. It also keeps our school grounds, parks, and golf courses looking clean and ready for play during the warm winter months. Warm weather months. The proposed capital improvement plan continues to fund renovations and/or improvements to town-owned buildings and/or properties. Technology and communication summary: In the 21st century, a town's technology, infrastructure must be maintained. It must keep up with the rapidly changing world of technology as well as the expectations of residents and businesses. Townwide technology improvements, as well as improvements specific to the police department, fire department, and the town hall are proposed in this capital improvement plan. Technology is constantly evolving, and the proposed capital improvement plan will continue to provide routine technology improvements to town hall and other town facilities, allowing departments to deliver goods and services effectively and efficiently. I will now review the budget in detail. Summary of years 23-24, bonding. The total bonding request for this year is $28,93,373. This includes $4 million for road reconstruction and $9 million for the renovation of the 1928 building. The Board of Education has included mechanical ventilation upgrades at the elementary schools. Other funds 23-24. The other appropriations for this year totals $8,027,000 and includes, in community recreation services, $55,000 for recreation facility improvements; $922,000 for Westwoods Recreation Facility, which will be used for a new pickleball courts and a spray splash park; in the fire department, $50,000 for the communication upgrades; in the Town Manager's office, $7 million for the 1928 building renovation project. I will now summarize the department's request for the first year of the capital improvement plan. Board of Education, the full Board of Education submission is included with the capital plan and will be presented next. Engineering, I am recommending $100,000 in the engineering department, which includes funds for light pole replacements, environmental code compliance, and the STP urban bridge at Monteith Drive. Highway and grounds, I'm recommending $550,000 in the highway and grounds department. That includes irrigation improvements, funding for various small capital improvement projects, a large dump truck, and other vehicle replacements. In the planning department, I'm recommending $25,000 in the planning department. Funds will be used for repairs to the Tinty Barn. In the fire department, I'm recommending $195,000 in the fire department, which will be used for the replacement of hose, a multi-phase communication upgrade, and a keyless building entry system. And I think I said 195, but I meant 170,000. In the police department, I'm recommending $423,000 in the police department. This includes funds for a supervisor's vehicle, technology improvements, multi-phase communication upgrades, and a dispatch console's replacement. In the Town Manager's office, I'm recommending $495,000. This includes funds for an architect to complete a design and construction for renovation of the current town hall building; banking funds for the 2026 revaluation; building and equipment improvements; technology improvements; fleet vehicle replacement; and the Unionville Museum. In community and recreational services, I'm recommending $100,000 for the town's matching share to purchase a dial-a-ride bus and stonehouse renovations. Westwoods Golf Course, I'm recommending $85,000 to replace a greens mower for the golf course. This capital budget will allow us to make headway to meet the town's capital improvement needs. As I've often said throughout the years, the cost of maintaining the town's infrastructure through a CIP is a necessary expense that must be recognized, and repeatedly deferring long-term maintenance on the town's property, buildings, and equipment will have a significant long-term impact. Over the last 10 years, the Town Council has made a conscious effort to fund the capital budget to the levels established by our capital funding policy. Seven out of the last 10 years, the town has met or exceeded the capital policy recommendations and has made considerable investment in large capital projects. Over the last four years, these large projects have included a new high school, fire apparatus, road improvements, and various school facility projects. That said, this year will be a difficult budget year due to inflation and extremely high utility cost. In addition, the town has recently completed a state-mandated townwide revaluation. Because of this revaluation, there will be a large shift in the tax burden from the commercial taxpayer to the residential taxpayer. The town has not seen this type of shift in values in 15 years. For that reason, we'll need to develop strategies that will lessen this year's tax impact. One strategy I'm recommending is to significantly reduce this capital budget. Even though the projects I've described tonight are needed, many can be deferred for one year. Deferring maintenance should not become the standard practice but will be necessary this year because of the significant increase in the residential real estate values. Although this is a difficult recommendation for me to make, it is only possible because we have consistently funded capital projects in the past. This will be one of my many strategies I will be proposing during the upcoming budget process. I look forward to working with the Town Council this evening. I'll now call on Scott, who will review the Board of Education's capital request. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy, and happy to be here tonight to discuss the Board of Education's capital improvement budget. I'm joined here this evening by our Board of Education Chair, Liz Fitzsimmons; our Superintendent of Schools, Kathy Greeter; and our Director of Technology, Matt Ross; and Director of Facilities, Sam Kilpatrick. And I want to thank our team across the district for their help in developing this year's capital improvement project and look forward to presenting to you this evening. Our capital improvement budget development philosophy is really a collaborative process and really grounded in strategic planning. As we move through our facilities recommendations, it's a compilation of work with district and building administrators, our facilities team, our Farmington Police Department, and along with our comprehensive facilities review, also known as the FIRE report. All of those elements come into play as we're planning our capital budget proposal, not only for next year but for the years beyond, as you heard from the Town Manager as well. And so that's what we'll be sharing with you this evening. We'll start with proposals for next year, and then we'll move into our out-years as well and share a few of those to give you an idea. Briefly, you can see on the screen, although very small, I know you also have a copy in front of you, you'll see a list of some of the projects that were completed over the past year, including unanticipated expenses that have arisen. And again, we'll be happy to answer any questions as we move forward. In the Board of Ed, we prepare our capital budget in terms of buckets. You can see on the screen now the 10 buckets that I'll take you through, and this is a means of organizing our approach and aligns with the town approach as well to implementing a capital budget. We'll start with technology. The total amount requested in the Board of Education's Technology Capital Improvement Plan for 23-24 is $585,000. This is a little bit over but in line with our seven-year projected capital plan. The capital improvements in technology represent a phased approach in our investment buckets. This includes, but not limited to, classroom AV upgrades at the K-6 schools, revisiting AV equipment in our auditorium, and desktop computer replacements. These are all part of a multi-year phased cycle. What I want to call your attention to, though, is the additional funding that's been added to network equipment. This has also been applied as a phased approach but directly relates to the Farmington High School building project. It's something that's been discussed in the project throughout, especially as we were value engineering earlier before we faced referendum as well. So currently, the building project provides a 30% reimbursement rate. We also qualify for federal E-rate reimbursement, which gives us a 40% reimbursement rate. So we have planned strategically during the building process, and this has been discussed with the committee to, again, value engineer and receive the best possible reimbursement rate. And so that's also accounted for in this year's proposal under the technology bucket. Next, we'll move to security, which is $175,000. This area provides funding for continued phasing and upgrading of security measures within the district according to Farmington Police Department recommendations, along with the K-8 facilities review report and the recommendations that are included within that. A significant amount of the $175,000 requested here is for a systemic replacement of safety and security systems which are reaching or have reached their life expectancy within the district. We're also looking to expand camera coverage in strategic locations, along with security enhancements such as radio replacement. We recently piloted an upgrade to the clock PA. Those two systems are linked within our schools, and so we recently piloted that at East Farms. And so that's why you can see the picture on the screen of the clock. Those two systems are linked, and we were also recommending and hoping to perform similar upgrades at the other three elementary schools within the districts. Previous work in our capital security has included window film barriers such as billards and fencing, and then access control as well. Those are some things we've been able to take care of already. I'll talk a little more about security in our out-years as well. Code and safety compliance is $125,000, and these are regulatory compliance measures for the upcoming year. These recommendations were part of either the K-8 facility review or, again, new regulations. So one of them listed here is compliance with Public Act 22-118, which will require work in each of our lavatories at all levels of the school district. Additionally, upgrades in sprinkler systems are required to meet new code, as well as magnetic hole opens for cafeteria and corridor doors at Noah Wallace, which is required by life safety code to be closed. So those are the requests in code safety compliance. Mechanical, electrical, and plumbing is a $240,000 request. This is a phased approach at Irving Robbins. You can see that pictured on the screen there to the right. Also, pipe insulation projects at Noah Wallace and Union School, which aims to increase energy efficiency. And something you'll hear throughout this presentation and in the out-years is, it's hard to believe, but Westwoods is coming up, is at 20 years, and so that is the life cycle here for many systems, including the mechanical system. So this project would aim to preemptively replace valves and fan coil units within the school, as those items are coming to life expectancy as well. Next, we'll move to structural/architectural, and this really is one sole project, and this is part of our banking strategy, which you've heard as well from the Town Manager. In this case, the request is for $470,000, which has already been banked, and additional banking to replace the 30-year-old floor at Irving Robbins Middle School. Next bucket is cafeteria equipment. We're in the third year of a significant replacement cycle across the district. The $108,000 request for cafeteria equipment is, again, part of a systemic replacement plan to avoid mounting repair costs, and you can see the items listed there to continue that phased approach to improving cafeteria equipment across the district. Next, the telephone system is another banking bucket, which we're hoping to build back our capital dollars towards to meet an expected phone system upgrade in the year 2025. Replacement of vehicles, there's also a mandate that districts begin moving towards alternative fuel vehicles, and so this request would replace a district vehicle with an alternative fuel vehicle according to PA 22-25, moving towards zero emission vehicles. Next is FFNE, and the request there is $185,000. We currently have an ongoing project that we plan to finish this year, Irving A. Robbins Middle School, replacing all student furniture. This has been a really successful project over the years in capital improvement, allowing a phased approach to all of our schools in replacement of equipment. Again, we plan to conclude the IAR student furniture, and this request would be the next phase in a replacement cycle of teacher furniture within the building. And finally, our last bucket, which I don't plan to spend much time on but would be happy to answer any questions for the council. You know that Sam and I joined the team earlier this year to discuss the grant opportunity that was available through the state of Connecticut. The amount on the screen matches the grant application. We were hoping to hear back from the state of Connecticut. Originally, we thought that would be January 31st of 2023. We still have not heard back, nor have other districts across the state. And in listening to what was already presented by the Town Manager regarding the current budget situation and the strategy being employed, I don't think it's necessary to continue along this path but would be happy to, Sam and I would be happy to go into further detail. There are several slides that also detail the process in which the district has taken on in terms of evaluating this and applying for the grant. But again, at this time, there is no response from the state on that grant and listening earlier. I'll move right ahead, and again, happy to go back to these slides if the council prefers later. Okay, so moving to out-years for our capital projects. This slide will highlight a couple of the out-years proposals. Again, these are according to our comprehensive K-8 facilities study, also known as the FIRE report. Examples of future out-year capital projects include replacement of vehicles, the telephone system upgrade, which we discussed, mechanical system replacements at Westwoods, which, again, is reaching that milestone, and then built-up roof sections at Westwoods as well are going to need to be addressed in the years ahead as well. So those are a few of the highlights on the out-year capital project proposals. And then finally, as you saw earlier, a summary of the requests, a little over $2 million in terms of capital cash requests, and then the large HVAC system as well as there. With that, again, thank you for your support and your time, and again, we're happy to answer any questions that come up.
Thank you, Scott, and thank you, Kathy.
So it would be, you'd ask for public comment?
Yeah. Okay, first, we will go to public comment. If there's anyone here that would like to speak, seeing none, is there anyone online? Devin?
Seeing no hands online at the moment, but we'll give it another second. We're all set.
Okay. Okay, we'll close the public hearing. I would just like to say, foreclosing, that I appreciate both the Town Managers, Kathy and Scott, both of you are being cognizant of our current situation and everything that's going on in the town right now, and it's likely a year where we're limiting a lot of what we've done. It's not something we haven't done in the past. Kathy made note of deferring is not a great practice, but we've been doing a good job of keeping up with capital. So deferring is a one-time, temporary fix, in essence, isn't such a bad plan. Okay, so we will close the public hearing.
And then motion?
I'd like to make a motion. To consider the fiscal year 2023-2024 to 2029-2030, seven-year capital improvement plan.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Kathy?
So you have a schedule in front of you, and usually what we do is that the board would come up to the place, and you guys would go through their budget in detail, and then I have my staff coming in afterwards. We figured that maybe after the board, we could break. I have some sandwiches, we could have that. And typically, the council does not act on the capital budget. It doesn't take any action. Of course, you can, but typically it doesn't. And then we usually have this meeting so that when we do the budget in mid-March in a couple of weeks, we've already gone through the capital in detail, which saves us some time. And then we take action when we do the budget in March. That's typically what we have done.
And I think that's a good plan, so we can start out. If the board would like to join us at the table in front, and we'll see if we have any questions for you. Keeping in mind, this is a very difficult year, and capital will be limited. Okay, thank you. Who would like to start with questions?
I've got a couple.
I do, too.
I'll try to save some for you.
Oh, please do.
Johnny, go ahead.
Gentlemen first, I guess.
So the, one of the slides you showed pipe insulation for Noah Wallace and Union School. And obviously, with utility costs going up, this is insulation for hot water piping, I assume?
Steam at Noah Wallace, yeah.
Okay. And putting this pipe insulation on, is there an expectancy in the next five or 10 years any of this piping needs to be replaced or fixed, where, you know, we're going to be taking this insulation out and replacing it? Or is this something that the piping is in good shape, and it's going to be there for many years, and we're just doing some energy efficiency upgrades?
So at Noah Wallace, it would be an energy efficiency upgrade. There is some fittings and elbows that are associated at Union School, so it fits in with our asbestos management plan as well there. But both of them are in pretty good shape. I don't anticipate that we'd be taking piping out or replacing a heating system in the next five years, if that's what you're asking.
Okay, thank you. Another question, another slide on the FHS. This is in the cafeteria replacement that you do every year, some of the equipment. The FHS had something for the deli, and I know that we're about a year-something away from having a new school and hopefully all new appliances. Can you explain that one a little bit?
Yep. So it is an immediate need. It's something that needs to be replaced, and it would be usable at another building. It is the same equipment that exists in other buildings, so we would move it to another building.
Okay. Last question. The Public Act that refers to the alternative fuel vehicles. I'm assuming it'd be electric at this point because natural gas cars are far and few in between. I know the Public Act is requiring us to move in that direction. Has there been any thought process in how to fuel that car in the future? And I don't want to dig too much into the weeds, but in light of some of the talk at the FHS and how we're prepping for electric, but the electric car charges aren't included. And I know we've been working on one at the Staples House, but that's, you know, taken some time because it crossed some number barriers that we have to go through a little different process. Has that been taken into account or thought of?
So that vehicle was actually an alternative fuel, so it would be a flex fuel, it would be a hybrid vehicle, so it wouldn't necessarily be an electric vehicle on that one. There's a phased approach to this allowed by the regulation, where I think it's 2035, where we would have to be zero emission, but you're allowed to phase into that. So this would be a hybrid vehicle. It would not be fully electric.
Okay. All right. I'll let someone else dive into the mechanical ventilation questions.
Russina?
I have no questions about mechanical ventilation, just so that you know. No, actually.
Thank you.
The capital improvement plan for technology, you mentioned $300,000, which was network equipment, and that would include, sorry, can you hear me? Some new equipment that would go for Farmington, the new building. So are we basically prepaying, and do we get a reimbursement for that? How does that work?
So during the value engineering process, we looked, one of the places that was looked at to cut back was FFNE, furniture fixtures and equipment. At that point, we had estimates from the state in terms of our reimbursement, and it was even lower than the 30% at that point. Now we're up around 30%. Our federal E-rate reimbursement is 40%. So by pulling the network switches and the wireless access points out of the project and using E-rate and going through the federal E-rate bid process, we can get a higher reimbursement rate. So last year, when I brought our capital proposal, we put a chunk of money into capital to start funding, basically to start banking, to money in capital to be able to purchase that network equipment via E-rate using capital dollars rather than through the project.
Got it.
The $300,000 is the balance of that. I already have budgetary estimates. In total, network switch gear, as well as access points for the currently designed for the new high school, is roughly in the $800,000 ballpark.
Okay. Thank you for explaining. So I'm really curious about the, what are we calling them? The units, the ventilation units that are going to be put onto the new building. And when the state delegation came here, was it last meeting or the week, the meeting before, we'd asked about sort of where in the pipeline a decision was, and they weren't clear. So we're supposed to have heard on, by January 31st, and we haven't heard anything. Okay. So the 15, let's say something magical happens, and we do hear back, the $15 million then, is that the entire reimbursement rate? So all of those ventilation units, the cost of, would be
Can you find it?
Covered by the state grant?
So it's a 30% reimbursement rate on the project. So if you look here, the grant application amount for Noah Wallace was $4,126,730, and so on in that first column. So the reimbursement on a total of $15 million would be $4.4 million, so the town share would be $10.6 million.
Okay. All right. And are we, when would that, if everything were to work out, when would that project start?
So that's another complication caused by this timeline, is we're now at February 28th with projects that have included prepurchasing because of supply chain issues. So if we were to hear as of tomorrow, it would be very difficult to get that prepurchasing. There would be no work that could be done this summer, is essentially what I'm saying. So you're talking about four elementary buildings that would need to be done within the one summer, next summer, because this program needs, all work needs to be complete by December of 2024. So that is another stress point on this timeline is So that is another stress point on this timeline, is the way this is rolled out. And the longer it is before grants are awarded, it really puts a lot of pressure on that project timeline.
Because when we talked about it, I think it was last year, or maybe, was it the year? Yeah, it had to have been last year because I was on the council before then. But when we talked about it, we had the phased approach of doing two schools and then two schools.
Yes.
So I guess, I mean, we're kind of in a bind now because we can't do anything, even if we wanted to. So we'd have to wait again another year for the ventilation to be started, the project, anyway.
I think there's a few challenges with this timeline. One is the escalated costs. If you remember from last year, we had a very different estimate to do this project. It's gone up even more so than what we've seen in any of other projects. Even our high school hasn't gone up this much when it comes to like percentage-wise. So I think when the state announced that they were going to do HVAC grants, and there's very, you know, there's just a limited number of construction companies that are doing this work, the price escalated significantly. And we've talked to our state reps about this, that it's very concerning how much the pricing went up relative to that. And you can, you can see by this particular slide, we had an initial estimate of over $15 million just to do, you know, fresh air in our buildings. And then we went back out because we were concerned with that estimate. And between the time that we submitted the grant, and now, we went and had a new estimate done, which is $9.8 million to do that, just for fresh air. If we were to do air conditioning, basically, it would be 15, a little over $15 million. So we wanted to illustrate this to the town council. We've illustrated it to the Board of Education, just to give everyone some insight in how these prices are fluctuating during this time. What I, what I would hope, and what I've talked to our state reps about, is going forward, not just having this grant, but just going forward, providing our reimbursement rate for HVAC projects. I think that is what we should be advocating for, so that as we go through next year and the budget process then, I'm hopeful during this legislative session, that it's just the norm as we go forward, that it's not requiring this special grant with limited number of dollars, but just going forward. It makes sense. We learned a lot during COVID and the pandemic about the need to upgrade HVAC systems across the state in our schools. And we hope that that will just be something that goes forward as a reimbursement. And then we have the time, you know, to really get through maybe this time when we have escalated prices and estimates that are way out of the norm.
Yeah, it just, it's just such a pity because we've been talking about this, and I know not even last year, for years, about doing something. And originally, because my kids went to East Farms, it was always like, well, the building couldn't handle the load, right? The, the energy.
For individual units.
Right. So now we have a solution. It just seems now we were stalled yet again. And it's just like that many more years of students who won't, and teachers who have to be there, who won't be able to, you know, breathe fresher air and cooler air theoretically. So I just hope, like, you know, as we talk, as you've mentioned, going forward, that we have, like, if the, for whatever reason, if the funding doesn't come through, like, what are the next steps? What is it that we can do as a district and as a town to push that forward? Because that's really important.
Right. But I do think, you know, I was at recent superintendent meeting, and we did talk about this, in fact, with Matt Ritter, and just talking about the importance of having HVAC reimbursement going forward. And I felt that there was an openness because it is literally in every school district. People are looking for these projects to get done. But the reimbursement helps a great deal when you're looking at an HVAC project.
Okay, thank you.
Joe?
Thank you, everybody, for coming. Quick question on the compliance for the mental products. What's the timeline date? Is that every bathroom in every school? Or is there a breakdown of what schools have to have it?
So it's every female and non-gender specific bathroom throughout the district, and then one additional male, labeled male bathroom at every building in the district.
And what's the date? Is there a timeline date?
September, so for the start of next school year.
Next school year.
Yep.
No questions. Thank you for coming.
No additional questions. Thank you.
Covered everything, but I did have one question on the structural/architectural. Are we seeing the same kind of increase in pricing for structural and architectural projects that we're trying to do because of the time?
Well, that one's flooring in particular. There has been some escalation in flooring, but not nearly to what we've seen in HVAC and other, other building components. So for instance, West District School, we were able to accomplish that corridor flooring project this past summer. And we took some value engineering options to get under it, but it was, it was close to what we had estimated for that project.
Okay, so those are kind of coming in line with what we hoped to do?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Great, seeing no other questions. Thank you very much for coming in this evening, making it through that brutal snow, since it's all melted by now. And yeah, we look forward to hearing you the next session when we're done with the capital. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a safe night.
Motion is a second.
We have a motion in a second.
Yes. Okay, we have a motion in a second. And you'd like to make a, recommend that we take no action on this?
This part?
Yes. Have we worded, take no action?
I don't want to do anything.
Is that how we do it?
Yeah.
We just say take no action.
Yeah, just continue on.
Okay. So we have a motion in a second on the table.
This is for everyone, so.
Yeah. Okay, so we're waiting until everything?
Everyone's done, yeah.
Never mind.
And you're looking at me.
Okay, so.
So we have police here. Would you like to start with that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Colin?
Chief.
Chief.
Chief, excuse me.
He takes his coat off, too.
Got to be the official uniform. Very impressive.
We have plenty of mechanical ventilation in this place.
Joe, why don't you join us, too?
How's everybody? How's it going?
I'm good. Where's Kathy's seat? I don't want to take Kathy's.
Sit right in the middle.
Always let her sit down first. Never know where she's going to go.
Exactly.
So everyone has in their packet this document right here that has kind of the summary of everything. It also has in my narrative. So if we're working off of right now, it would be page C5, and that's the police department.
Another one of those?
Oh, you did. Okay.
Does any, everyone?
Oh, we have it on our thing.
So in the police department, we have 1, 2, 3, 4 items in the first year, 23, 24. The first item is $70,000 for a supervisor's vehicle. This would be used to replace a 24-hour shift supervisor's vehicle. We have $105,000 for technology improvements. Funds will be used to continue to pay for the body and in-dash cameras, that we have a lease for the body cameras, the new state law, and replace security cameras at the police department. So we're upgrading all the security at our buildings, and this would be replacement at the police department. There would be $208,000 for communications upgrades, and that's will be funds, will be used for the replacement of, bless you, portable radios and improved radio coverage at West Farms Mall. And then $40,000 is, funds will be used to purchase the last of the dispatch console furniture and replacement of the floor. And so this was a multi-year. We've been banking money, and then we're going to do them all at the same time. So those were the four requests for 23, 24. And as you can see on the out-years, there's various things, but basically communication. Again, we're looking, going to be looking at some generator replacement, HVA replacement. Like Westwood School, our police department was built in, what, 2000?
Yeah, we moved in in '02.
'02, so we're 20 years old. So we are, do have our replacement plans for roofs, HVAC, and things of that nature. So I have the chief here, if you have any particular questions about anything in his budget.
Okay, open for questions.
The communications, if I didn't catch that, I apologize, was, last year, we talked about the ability to talk between police departments and their various stuff. Is that communications budget, that 208, part of that?
The 2, no, the 208 is for, yeah, I guess 58,000 of that would be for the next wave of 10 portable radios. And that would be something we've been doing over the last four years. This might be the fifth year. And now that would have, every officer would have the upgraded portables, which allows us to include West Hartford and Bristol on our frequencies for direct communication. So that is a part of that 208.
Okay, thank you.
And what else is included in the 208?
The other 150,000 on that line item is the second half of a West Farms Mall coverage.
Right.
This year, we're doing the police side, which is, it was estimated around 75,000. I think it came in at 67,000. So we're actually, we've already ordered the parts for that. Next year's for the fire side. For their, their infrastructure is a lot older, so it's a little more expensive and more labor-intensive. But we've made some adjustments on the police side over the years to try and improve the radio coverage in that area. So it's a little cheaper for this year's as opposed to next year's. So that 150 rounds out that two-year project.
Thank you.
Yep.
Other questions for the chief?
Chief, what would your priorities be for capital projects?
Well, the first line item, the 67,000, is for the Axon cameras. That is a legislative mandate. So that's everybody's priority because we have to pay it. Everything else on the wish list, I would, I would say the radios, to get those, that it's been a five-year deal to get those portables upgraded. To finish that would be, you know, something that we probably should do.
I'm sorry, and that was the, that was 58?
That was the 58,000. Yeah, that was something we started five years ago. We were buying 10. That, that's 10 portables is what that cost. So that would finish us to get that done, which would be great. And, you know, that improvement at West Farms Mall's been, you know, something that's been a problem for a long time. So I would say that would probably be third on the list.
Great.
Just to piggyback on that, chief?
Yep.
The mall, I know we have, back in the day, they'd pay for car. Any funds coming from them and from dispatch, too? Anything from Burlington, Nora, to help ease the costs and send dispatch for them?
There's a PSAP reimbursement.
We get an officer and a half from West Farms Mall, plus they give us a little bit for a car, plus they cover the majority of the benefits for the officers, for one officer. And Burlington, we have a contract with them, and they provide us approximately $3,600 a month for dispatch. And in addition, because we have technically a regional dispatch, we qualify for a state grant, a PSAP grant. So we get probably close to $140,000 from the state for having a regional dispatch. So, so we get quite a bit of money for that.
Yeah, I remember the talk about the realization and everything else, and was glad to see it's coming through. And obviously, chief, thank you for your work. And I see you're, you know, moving your department forward with the expansion of the K-9, another officer being hired. So keep.
Our comfort dog came in.
Yep.
You have our comfort dog.
Nash, Nash, the comfort dog, came to visit.
You were supposed to bring the comfort dog. That softens us up.
Yeah, forethinking on my part.
I'll use a little comfort.
Any other questions for the chief?
No questions.
Okay, seeing none. Thank you for coming in. Thank you for the great work you're doing. And I appreciate you giving us an idea on the priorities there also.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Have a good night.
The next page would be C4, and we have Tom here. Hi, Tom. How are you?
Good, well.
Okay, let's see, page five, page six. So on page four, we have the fire department's request in 23, 24. So we have 1, 2, 3, 4 items, but three of them are out of the general fund. So $25,000 would be hose, and that would be funds to, will be used to replace hose that fails inspection. And as some of you may know, we do replace hose periodically, and we bank money, and then we need to, we spend it, and then we bank more of it. So we need money for hose. $50,000 for communication upgrades. This is 50,000 to continue the multi-phase communication plan to replace mobile and portable radios. There's $50,000 for, out of the general fund. And if you look on your sheet here on C4, you'll also see that it's for another, would be the other 50,000. So it's really a $100,000 project. And then $95,000 for keyless building entry. Funds will be used to install security cameras at all five fire stations. This is our townwide security plan, which will provide consistency. We have money in this year's budget where they're doing the key fobs at all the fire departments, and this would be for the cameras in the fire department, the second phase of them. You also see in the out-years, you have some different engine replacements. We are not proposing any type of bond for an engine replacement this year. We do have one for next year, and that is engine eight, I think. Eight, eight would be proposed for next year, but we're not proposing any bonding. Tom and the volunteer chiefs have an apparatus committee working right now, and they're reviewing all our apparatus. And Tom's now been here, what, eight months?
Yes.
And he's looking at some different things for us and some of the apparatus and what we have and things like that. So we do have a committee working on that. But we, we've done a pretty good job of replacing our apparatus, but there are some coming up in the next couple of years. And I don't know if you have any questions for Tom?
Questions?
I have the same, same question. What would your priorities be?
Well, I would have to say the communication upgrade. I know we've already completed three phases after this year, and then next year will be the final phase. The radios are pretty outdated for the last, for the officers. The hose replacement also is pretty vital. The town has hose that's from 1994, still in service, which is usually, fire hoses has a 10 to 12-year life. So we're working on borrowed time with a lot of, a lot of the hose that's in town. So I would say those two are.
You're saying hoses are important for fighting fires, I assume?
Yes.
All right.
No more bucket crews.
That's all right. I just want to make sure we have it on the record.
Other question?
Just one question of clarification. Thank you for coming down. We just heard that there are some communication upgrades being done to, to West Farms Mall that are, and I'm just, just for clarification, what are the communication upgrades here? Do the, is that included as part of that, or is that something separate?
So this is separate. This is for the portable and mobile radios. For, we're finishing tungses this year. And then next year, all the officers, volunteer officers, officers, excuse me, will be getting new portable radios and new mobile radios for the apparatus. So, yeah, that's a, they're two separate projects.
And those will work with the upgrades going on at?
Yes, yes, they will.
Currently, they don't, or?
They have a difficult time. West Farms has a difficult time. I know the police and the fire both are having difficult times, difficult time with the repeaters out of West Farms. And over that area, you have a lot of medical buildings. I've done a few tests with microbulus, and they're having a tough time getting out of the medical buildings as well. An upgrade at West Farms will greatly enhance the communications, I think, for both the police and fire. You'll have a closer repeater and better communications in that area on that side of the town.
So it's just not the mall, it's also the medical buildings?
Well, the medical buildings is kind of universal, but a closer repeater and an upgraded system at the mall will, will greatly enhance the communications.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ed, come on in.
Thank you. Yeah, just one quick question on the building security improvements. So you guys said you had already done the key fob, and the 95,000 requested for this budget cycle is for the cameras. And I see there's another, another 95,000 in 2024, 2025. So what? ninety-five thousand in twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five. So what, um, what piece of the, um, security improvements is the, the next ninety-five thousand?
So the fobs are being done this year?
Oh, the, I'm sorry.
Yes.
So the fobs are being done this year, and then the camera?
Would be for next.
Next year, okay.
Yes.
Gotcha. And then, so what was the, what was done the year prior?
Nothing.
That was it, I think, right?
Yeah, the, I, I know.
Let me see, hold on.
In the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three that was funded, the ninety-five thousand there?
That's the.
Twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three is the key card system.
The fobs.
The fobs. Okay.
Okay, next year is supposed to be the security.
Security cameras.
Right. I'm talking about the following year, exactly.
Yeah.
Yes, what's that piece of it?
Other questions for Tom while we're waiting on?
Yeah. Thanks for coming in, Tom, all as well. Are you still looking for the extrication equipment?
We're completed it. Uh, we've been able to complete it.
That's off the, that's.
That's off the desk. I, uh.
Still on our paper, so we're, we're done.
Okay, I was able to get two sets of it this year for, you know, what would it cost?
Is that still part of your plan to make all the equipment same on every truck? So whoever firefighter grabs from one truck is the same stuff?
Yeah, so Farmington Fire had upgraded. So they went from hydraulic extrication to battery-operated, which is a huge improvement. It makes deployment a lot easier, and it makes, um, you know, and it, it makes issues a lot easier as well, because you can replace the batteries a lot easier than you can replace any hydraulics. So, uh, we replaced East Farms and tungstus this year, um, looking, um, two to three years, then possibly, um, giving Farmington the same equipment. And then it'll be universal throughout the town, and it'll help with training as well. They can all train together.
Right.
Um, that was an error. We'll take that out.
Okay, so there's.
Yeah, just the.
Really a zero in that following year?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, thank you.
That's ninety-five, right?
There you go.
Very nice. Other questions? Tom, thank you, and, uh, welcome to your first budget season here in Farmington.
Thank you. Thank you. Nice job.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think Russ is here.
I didn't say her. Didn't say anything.
What? You always sit on the other side? So we'll start on, uh, C-two, engineering. How you doing, Russ?
I'm tired.
Yes.
Not good.
Yeah, good. Nice job with the snow plows.
Yeah, we'll start with that. We got the roads all cleared out very early. Thank you.
Hey, they good.
Nice job.
We had one breakdown. We lost a muffler on a nineteen, oh, a two-thousand-and-four truck.
Would you call our mechanic today?
Uh, he's MacGyver.
Was it duct tape? Yeah.
And a, uh, like a sleeve for your dryer vent.
Oh, nicely done.
He got a lot.
Literally fell off.
Tell him thank you. Tell Jim.
Nobody got hurt. No, there were no injuries, no accidents.
Place it on the road, too, get ready.
Oh, yeah. It was like a, he's like a, you know, being at the Daytona five-hundred.
In the snow.
In the snow.
So I thought we'd do the general fund first in engineering, and then, uh, we do have four million dollars I'm recommending for road, uh, road projects. And Russ does have a map, and we'll put that on showing some of the roads that we've done, and which ones are slated for the next couple of years that we would have for the four million dollars. So in the general fund, we have twenty-five thousand dollar for light pole replacement. Funds in this account will be used for street light pole replacements as needed. As some of you may know, we now own the light poles in, uh, town, so we have to do the replacement for them. We bank money, or as things happen, we spend that money out of that account. Uh, twenty-five thousand dollars for environmental compliance. Funds will be used for stormwater testing and permitting. That's our DEP requirement. And fifty thousand dollars for the urban bridge at Monte Drive. This would be funds that we would bank and also be using so when the bridge project is moving along, things that aren't covered by the grant miscellaneous things, we'd have funding to be able to use that. So those would be the three items in the engineering department. And then, Russ, you were gonna, um, talk to us about the roads.
Sure. Can you zoom in a little, Dev? Just so people can see it a little better. So we are gonna do in, for this year coming up, we have Indian Hill, Penfield Place, and for round one, along with Whispering Rod, Red Coat, and Silver Smith. What's with the dirty look already?
It was more of like a, that's it? Just kidding.
I was waiting to see. I got a bad reaction already.
Ask the questions. Don't let my face guide you.
Uh, then we're, so I'm not sure if you remember, we had, we received a grant from Lotsip, from CROG for three-point-two million for Burlington Road reconstruction. Uh, so we're, because of receiving that grant, we shifted gears a little bit. And everyone knows that this document is a living document. It's fluid. It's, it can't be set in stone. So then we're gonna move over for round two. We're gonna go to Westmeath Lane, Doris Street, Wooddale, Oldfield, Glen Hollow, and Crab Apple, and get the side streets off of Burlington Road, get those all paved, so that the following year, when we go and reconstruct Burlington Road, we're not traveling over the newly paved road to get the side roads done. Uh, twenty-four, we're gonna do Basswood, Wildwood, Deepwood, Pamela Court, Michael, and Tallwood. Uh, for round one, round two, we'll do West District Road, Bella, Mohawk, Bat Court, Pickett, Keane, and Forest. And that's about where we're at right now.
And, and you think that would be close to the four million dollars?
It'll be close. That'll give us about six miles of road for the two years. Um, it'll, and that'll carry us over into the twenty-six, twenty-five fiscal year. And we have some roads on the list that may or may not be on there come twenty-twenty-five, based on whatever happens. But do you, would you like me to tell those roads?
Yes, I would.
Okay, thank you. Uh, they would be Batterston Park Road from, uh, two mile to the town line, where they did the water main.
Yep.
Uh, Robin, Berkshire, and Winterwood.
Ding 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 ding.
Okay, do I get a gold star for that?
Well, I, listen, I am just an advocate for the folks that live in my neighborhood. And Russ, maybe at the bottom of that chart, Devin, why don't you show, uh, we've been pretty impressive with all the roads that we've done. I think it's on that chart, right, that where you told?
Yeah, you gotta zoom out now, Dev. Get so that everyone can see the whole, whole map. So you can see, everything in red has been paved. Everything that we have done since two thousand and four, we have kept track of. I have records back to like eighty-six, but some of those records going back, trying to figure out, or eighty-one, trying to figure out what they paved, because at some point, they would pave a portion of a road, not sure. So it really wasn't, it's not that accurate. But this is as of two thousand and four. All the roads we have paved are in red. And we have been very successful with the program by the bonding that you all, you know, put on for the bonding question for the paving. Uh, we spend every nickel that we get. At one point, um, the cost back, I think it was two thousand and ten, oil was way up. We didn't get a lot of roadwork done, but we spent, you know, we spent all of our dollars. And the oil has come down, so we get more bang for our buck now, because asphalt prices are down, uh, from where they had been. So that's a good thing. We have, uh, the, the guys on the highway, they worked tremendously hard during that time. We, last year, we did Town Farm, Elizabeth, Wolf Pit, and Irene, Church, Carrington, Hart, Tungstus, Hotchkiss, and Markey. And we got a lot of roadwork done, a lot of complaints, because we were over by the school during school. But we're done, and you move on. And we did it, the guys do a great job with it. We do all, we basically do everything in-house except for the paving and the milling. We subbed that out because it's more economical for us to do that, uh, through the VIP program that the state puts out for bidding. Um, so it speaks for itself. It speaks volumes. So we, we try, we're trying, this program is to gear up that you're repaving the roads every twenty years. And with the funding, we're able to do that. There was a lot of time where we, the years went by, we didn't pave at all. And it just deteriorates your roads exponentially.
And, um, right now, we have no funding for roads. So if we don't, if we decide either not to put the roads on for the bond, or the roads don't pass, um, there would be no road projects being done. There's nothing banked. They've spent all the money. And so that would be, the four million dollars would be for the next, what did you say, two?
Two years. Three years.
Three years would be for that. And, um, just as, you know, people do really, I, my impression is they really do like to have the roads done. We still, if, if we put eight million dollars on, we could use eight million dollars, you know, to move it. There is, uh, yes?
Hold on.
Okay.
We could use all the money you give us, but we can't get it done in that.
I know.
I just wanted to be clear that if you gave me eight million dollars, it's not one year's worth of work.
Right.
Just to clarify.
I get it.
That's all you would do.
So, but anyway, so those are the, the roads, and it's, we are recommending a four-million-dollar, uh, bond for that. Um, any questions on the roads? Russ is gonna also do the highway and grounds.
Just a question. I know it's showing four million now, and then obviously, you spend that over the next couple of years. But historically, if you go back ten, twelve, fourteen years, I know you said back to the eighties, but at least just in the last ten or twelve years, has that historically been a two-million per year? That's been kind of the average throughout?
It's actually changed quite a bit. We were, for a longest period of time, probably for like ten years, we were like eight-hundred thousand a year. In the past four years, it's been one-point-two million dollars on average each year. Um, that's based on three rounds of paving. The only exception would be the, um, the COVID year.
Yeah, we only did one round.
Um, we, we held off on paving that year, um, because of the uncertainties with cash flow and stuff. We only did one round of paving in the fall. We did like four-hundred thousand. But, but on average, the past four years, it's been about one-point-two million dollars a year, three rounds of paving.
You're, and you're saying what we've actually spent now?
This is actual spending.
Spending, not what we've put on the bond.
Okay.
Okay.
Right, the bonds, the bonds, the questions themselves have been two million dollars. We actually, going back twenty, it's like we put one million dollars, or a million and a half. And then probably about ten years ago, we started doing two-million-dollar bond questions, try to get through, um, that was getting us through two years. And now it's, it's, our last bond question was twenty-twenty-one for two million dollars, and we're out of money right now. So.
The prices have been up, too. So I'm sure, I'm assuming that that money goes a lot, a lot less.
And, and, and it's, Russ could tell you, it really depends on the condition of the road, as to how, how deep it's milled, how much pavement has to go down. So in some roads, probably, you know.
We, yeah, so we, we'll reclaim, there's a couple, like last summer, we did, uh, Hotchkiss. We just reconstructed the whole road. It hadn't, I think it, it was still, it had a paper-thin overlay on it of a, and it was an oil road, stone and oil. And then we basically reclaimed the whole blacktop into the existing base, regraded everything, added some drainage, and basically rebuilt the road. And the people are happy. It came out great. And it's, then other roads will mill, will mill two inches, and we'll put back two inches. Depends on what, how much blacktop is there. We go out and do test pits. We determine how thick the blacktop is, how thick the base is, what kind of base it is. So that'll determine on our course of action what we're gonna do for each individual road. There are also times, like on Town Farm, we had a section, uh, by the polo grounds, where we had to actually, we milled. It was in between one of our test pits, and we ended up having to reconstruct the section, because it just, there was nothing there for whatever reason. I can't tell you why, but it was just about two and a half inches of blacktop. So we took that out, re, added more base, recon, reconstructed about two-hundred feet or so. So, but for the most part, we tried to mill and overlay. And I know you, you'll hear from, maybe from your constituents, um, like, should crack seal. Uh, I'm not a fan of it. It's a Band-Aid at best. And if you get into, if your program allows, and you, you're redoing your roads every twenty years, you don't need that extra, you know, crack sealing option. I don't, it's, to me, it's putting a Band-Aid, you know, lipstick on a pig type of thing. You're putting a Band-Aid, and you're masking the problem. And if the road is that, that cracked, you're be, all that tar is not gonna help it. It's gonna get on your cars. It's gonna peel up. And it just, it doesn't really do anything. So that's been our, kind of our philosophy since I've been in this position, and it's worked out well. We've been very successful with it.
Great. Other questions?
Yes, please.
Hi, Russ.
Hello.
How's it going? All right, so our neighbors on Berkshire are gonna be really, really pleased that their turn is coming, because they've been complaining about those roads, and especially about, around Batterston Park, um, for, for years. But since the Batterston Park project has sort of stalled, like, will that impact when their roads get done? Because when we talked about this, was it last year, you mentioned that they were gonna come in and do like whatever with the sewers, and I don't know what was happening with the park itself. And that's why we couldn't do anything with the roads then. But now that we have a timeline for those streets, will, anything with that project impact getting the paving done?
So we couldn't pave, uh, we waited for the water company to install the water main. Um, so typically, what we do is we wait, we let the road, they'll patch it, they'll, we'll let it settle for a year, two years. West District Road, that water main was put in about eight years ago.
Mm-hmm.
Other roads have taken priority. So just to give you a little background on what happens. So we work with the utilities to make sure that we're paving, we're not paving, and they're coming and digging the road upon us. Uh, it's just an, at an expense, and it doesn't look too smart. And I probably wouldn't be sitting here if that happened frequently, um, to be quite honest. The part, the work that's going on at Batterston Park, they're starting their design. Um, so in three years, they should be well into construction, if not complete. Um, so any tie-ins that they would have to do, we would coordinate to make sure that they get their tie-in for anything prior to our, our going in and paving it.
Okay. Did the water company do their work?
They're done.
They're done.
They were completed last year, yes.
Yeah.
Yes, I remember the placard that was up on the.
Yep, they put a big sign up.
They did.
Yeah.
Everybody was really excited, because they thought that that meant the Batterston Park Pond project was starting. And we're like, no, that's not, that's what that was.
Totally.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Other questions for Russ?
All right, we'll go through the highway and, uh, grounds part of it on C-three.
Before we leave that, Russ, just remind me how many miles of road we have in town?
Uh, about a hundred-and-twenty-four.
Okay, so getting as many miles you do every year is incredible, really. And you, you said something that I think we might have to modify. You said, everyone knows it's a living document. I might argue with that. As Rafina and other people have pointed out, once people hear that name, they don't think it's living. They're coming in, you know.
Trust me, I.
I heard the name. Why, I know you know, because you get the first call. So this is a reminder to everyone, it's a living document. Things happen. Dates can change. Anyway, that was all.
So on page C-three is the Highway and Grounds Department. So we have, um, twenty-five thousand dollars for irrigation improvements, and this would be funds to be used to upgrade irrigation systems at the schools, um, and at the athletic fields. IAR Middle School is slated for this funding. Fifty thousand dollars in capital projects. Funds will be used for small building repair projects throughout town. One thing we're gonna talk about in the operating budget, we've done some restructuring in the, uh, Highway and Grounds Department, and we have a capital projects person. Um, you may be aware of the pavilion outside. That group had built the pavilion. And so we have a group that they're doing smaller capital projects. And, um, but we found that since they're so handy, we don't, they don't have any money to do any of the work. So like, when they did the Staples House roof for us, they've done things at the Highway and Grounds. So we want. We have money.
Pavilion, the pavilion.
I know where my bread's buttered tonight.
Pavilion, thank you. So that's what that fifty thousand dollars would be for. Two-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars for a dump truck in the Highway and Grounds Department. That would be to replace a nineteen-ninety-eight highway dump truck. That's the big snowplow truck. It's also a multi-use truck, but that's what the truck. Ninety-five thousand dollars for a Parks Maintenance Truck, and that would be an existing two-thousand-and-six Parks ma, Maintenance Truck. Seventy-five thousand dollars for a Parks mower, and that would be to replace a two-thousand-and-six Parks mower. And twenty-five thousand dollars for a maintenance vehicle, and funds would be to supplement existing funds to replace a two-thousand-and-six vehicle maintenance truck. So we have funds banked, and, and then this would be twenty-five thousand dollars to get the vehicle. So those would be the items that were on the Highway and Grounds, um, for the general fund.
Okay. Any questions about the general fund items?
Russ, what's the most important vehicle to get out of your, there's three here, right?
Do you want your roads plowed?
What?
You want the roads plowed?
I want it all. I want it all.
There you go. I didn't have to answer. Yeah, the plow.
Plow.
Truck.
Okay.
Big truck.
And then of the other two, the mower and the maintenance truck, I'm guessing the truck over the mower?
No.
Mower?
Yeah, the mower, to be quite honest. Because our, we are, with all the fields that we have.
Yeah.
The mowers and dire, dire straits at this point.
Yeah. I mean, they're used so much, yeah.
We can't MacGyver it?
We've MacGyvered it. It's been glued, glued.
That's, that's one thing we can say, though. If something needs to be replaced at highway, it has to be in its last legs. And so you have done everything possible over the years to make things last as long as they can, and try doing anything to it, so.
Exactly. We talk about it. Like, how many people are driving a 1998 vehicle?
Every day.
I'm not being, I'm just, I'm being completely honest with everybody. Like, if you are, you're not driving it every day. You know, these trucks are used five days a week. They do plow, they haul material, they do everything. You know, they're always in use. And they're, these three are, we've argued, and I'll be honest, and I'll say it, I probably got to get in trouble for it, but I've asked for two of them to replace the three trucks that are 1998. And one of them we're taking offline because we just can't repair it anymore. And I'm not crying, I'm not complaining. It's, facts are facts. It is what it is. But, and I understand that we can't get, you know, take half of our capital budget. I get it. But when things don't happen, you know, we're out there today, we're out, we were out in from 10 o'clock last night, or 7 o'clock pre-treating through the night. And, you know, we have a couple of hydraulic hoses go, we have a muffler fall off, things happen. A couple of cutting edges broke off, you know, but we got it, we move on, and you're doing your job. But you just, these trucks, they go on and on and on.
Right. Well, it really made a, we didn't fund a truck last year. We had, because we also, we funded another big piece of equipment. And so it's, it does make a difference that when we missed one year of the truck. And, you know, Russ has talked about that. He would have really preferred two trucks. And now we're hoping for one truck.
Right.
Because I think it is, it is a priority with the snow.
I will, I will say that in my business, I never get that old. The headaches, the, the cost of repair, I would never get to a 1998. We're lucky if we make it 15 years, couple hundred thousand miles. And then it just, it's cost prohibitive.
Right.
Unless you have a, an amazing mechanic that can get you that last five years. Other than that, it just doesn't make any sense.
Oh, and that's, we do it. We, you're right. We have great mechanics. And it's just at the point now, that one of them, we can't even combine one, you know, two and to get one. They're, they're gone. So it is what it is. So the truck would be my number one priority.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Russ?
On page C4 would just be the planning department. And that would be the Tinty Barn Improvements. And as you know, on Route 10, we, on the Tinty property, we own that barn there. And this would be, funds will be used to continue with a multi-year program to restore the Tinty and Hind Farm barns. We also own the farm at the Hind Farm. And so we've been repairing them, and it's a multi-phase project. So this would be $25,000 to continue the work. And I think this one is majority on the Tinty Farm. Any questions on the barn?
Questions on the farm buildings? Okay.
Okay. And then the last item is the Westwoods Golf Course, and that's on page C6. And that would be $85,000 for a Greens mower. And that would be funds to, will be used to replace a 1999 and a 2007 Greens mowers.
Questions on the mowers?
Obviously same mechanic works on that, too.
Yes.
And I think that's it for Rose. Okay? Yeah. So that's it for Russ, for the roads and for the general fund.
Great. Russ, thank you for joining us. Hopefully you can get some sleep tonight.
Absolutely.
Guessing you didn't get a lot last night.
A few hours. We're good.
All right.
Thanks, Russ.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Nancy's here?
Realized I forgot my regular shoes, so I still have snow boots on.
Hi, Nance. How are you? Everyone knows Nancy Parent. We're going to be on C6. So we have two items from the general fund, and then we have a couple of additional items that are being proposed to be funded through other sources. So in community and recreation, we have $25,000 for a dial-a-ride, a bus. Funds will be used as the town's matching share to purchase a dial-a-ride vehicle. So that would be $25,000 for the dial-a-ride. And then $75,000 for the Stonehouse renovations. Funds will be used to continue to renovate the exterior of the Stonehouse. And the Stonehouse is at the Westwoods property. We've been doing some work. I don't know if anyone has driven by it recently, but the whole outside has been done.
Looks fantastic.
It really looks, but this would be now to get started the interior of it.
And the porch.
And the porch, in the front. So that's what those two funds would be used for. And then we also have two others. It would be $55,000 for recreation facility improvements. And let me find that one second. So what we do is that we have a fund that, you know, recreation is, many of the recreation is funded through user fees. And part of those user fees, we take a portion of that, and those user fees go into doing some maintenance. And what, it would be $55,000. And that would be funds from the Recreation Fund would be used for fencing and gates at Tunxus Meets softball fields, and fencing around the skateboard park. So what we have done is we have a more formalized program now. In the past, the Recreation Fund would fund certain projects based on our policy. Now what we're doing is whatever that percentage of number is, we're actually putting it in the budget and having it as an O, so we know exactly how much we're supposed to spend. So it's based on our policy. So this number changes every year, depending on how much money the Recreation Fund makes. And so this year it would be $55,000.
We keep $8,000.
We put some in, we put some in the fund balance of the Recreation Fund balance, not the Town Fund balance, the Rec Fund balance. And then $55,000 is used, that Nancy, Russ, and Recreation work to see, doing like fencing and nets and different things like that for upgrades for recreation. Also in that for an O is $922,000. And that is for the Westwoods Recreation Facility. And that's $500,000 from a steep grant. If you remember, we got a steep grant for the use of new pickleball courts and a spray splash park. And I'm also, which I've mentioned before, recommending $422,000 for our match of, from the ARPA funds. So those two items equal $922,000. And that would be for creating our new facility down at Westwoods site. And I don't know if you've been out there lately, but we are, Russ has been doing some work and the sewer treatment plant to connect for water and things like that for the spray park. So we've been working on that. So those are Nancy's items, right?
Yeah. I don't think there's anything else.
Yeah.
Again. Do you anticipate any issues at the parking area after that? Because I know just from the golf course, that sometimes parking gets tight, and people park on the grass area, or back up that way, adding the splash pad and.
We're adding parking.
We're adding a whole new parking lot.
You're adding part of it. Okay.
Yeah.
Is that area right across, is that a little grassy area behind the maintenance building?
Yeah.
That's what we took.
Okay. Perfect.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Actually, just a quick question on the Stonehouse.
Mm-hmm.
We're doing $75,000 for a 23, 24. And then we have $75,000 for the following two years.
Yeah. We have a, a whole plan. It's a phased approach. It's expensive. So we're just phasing it out. We're trying to do the inside of the building and the outside. So the outside is doing the porch. And I don't know if you've seen the outside porch, too, on the side of the left to renovate that.
Yeah, we did a tour last.
Yeah, oh, right. Correct. Yeah. So that, making it ADA accessible, the front entrance way. And then we're going to move inside. And Nancy has some thoughts that potentially now that we're going to have our spray park there, part of the office, maybe that area will still be for some kinds of recreation. But then also.
I was just going to ask, well, would we be using it?
Yeah. And then the other part, we have upstairs, we have apartment rentals. And, but one of the things that Nancy has mentioned to us is that we don't have a, a two-bedroom accessible apartment.
Correct. We do not.
And that potentially part of the downstairs would be turned into an accessible apartment. And then when you're facing the building to the left where the porch is, there would be maybe some things that we would have there.
Like summer camp stuff.
Summer camp and stuff that would help us with the, the spray park on the other side. So it's a multi-year to renovate the building.
Yeah.
Okay. Just curious. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions for Nancy? No, that sounds great. Thank you, Nancy. Appreciate you coming out. Right?
You're very welcome. I think I'm the last one.
Yeah. The next item we have is Town Manager. And I think I have Brian here, too, right?
You do?
Yeah. Come on up, Brian. What page is that? Just C. On the, uh, C5. So in my area at C5, we have quite a few general fund things. $70,000 for technology improvements. Funds in this account will be used for firewall replacement, council chambers, technology upgrades, and bacon funds for a sewer infrastructure replacement.
Server.
Uh, server, right? Server. Server.
Sewer was the other guy.
Yeah. $250,000 for town hall improvements. This is our thoughts where would be, funds would be used for an architect to develop conceptual designs, and also some of the renovation cost that would be needed to turn this building into a town hall annex, when, if the 1928 building, if we move to the 1928 building. $50,000 building equipment improvements. Funds will be used for unanticipated repairs to various town buildings and equipment. One of the things that we have done, and we've been successful with it, is that we have expensive equipment that, again, especially our trucks, our, like Russ was talking about, our fire trucks. And we don't budget for those types of expenses in the operating budget. And you could have an expense on a truck that could cost $10,000, or in the buildings, and some of our buildings are old. What Joe has been doing is that we've been banking money and using that money so that we don't have to take it out of the operating budget, because we don't fund it in the operating budget. And that's helpful. And so we do, we have depleted those funds. So that would be to start building those funds up again. Again, $50,000 for revaluation, believe it or not. We started to bank money again for the 2026 revaluation. Revaluations is very expensive. So typically, we try to do it in more than one year. So Joe has suggested that we start banking the money. $50,000 for fleet vehicles. This is another item that we have, building inspector cars, inspectors, different cars that our employees drive on it, that they don't take home on a day-to-day basis. But they all have to be replaced. So we usually have a fund, and that when the cars need to be replaced, we sell the cars, put the money into the account, and continue to replace it. And so this would be banking that money and starting that program for replacement. And $25,000 for the Unionville Museum. We have a portion of the joint project with the Unionville Museum, and that's $25,000 for the museum, for their kitchen project and their renovation that they did at the Unionville Museum. Brian, while you're here, why don't you just maybe talk to us a little bit about your $70,000 in technology?
Yeah. So $25,000 of that was for council chambers technology. I think we want to get rid of this screen over here, because it's really hard to see. We want to do a bunch of stuff with the audio in this room so that we can kind of control it from the back when we're, you know, moving the cameras around and stuff. $30,000 for firewall replacement. Our fire, we have two firewalls, one here and one over at the police department, just for redundancy of connections. Those are about six years old at this point. And, you know, there's newer technology out there that can catch more malware traffic going through the firewall, that kind of thing. So we'd like to replace those. And the rest of it was banking to, for server infrastructure replacement, that we do projects usually with the Board of Ed, where we replace servers at town hall and servers up at the high school and, and storage, so that we have a redundant system between the two sites.
All right. And one of the things you'll see when we talk about it in the operating budget, but one of the only areas in the operating budget that we are doing some more expansion on is the technology end of things. Brian has been really on top of things. But security has been like really in the forefront about what we have to do with our technology. It's a never-ending battle of just keeping up with what we have to do to keep our systems safe and, and secure. So Brian and Todd are, have been doing a really good job. But we've recently, and you'll see it in the operating budget, have, it's, have, really, we're contracting out some of the security and some of the programs, and having people monitor our systems. And this is, you know, like you said, the firewalls and some of these different things. It's really become very sophisticated, as you all know. But I think that we're on, we're on top of it. But it is something that we do have some concern that we need to keep up with. And I'll answer your question, Keith, if you asked what some of the priorities would be. It would be that, you know, we have to fund some of this security types of things for our technology for the town hall.
We have, as part of that technology, we have a program where employees of town hall open up malware. We know. Yeah, like fish, fish, fish testing? Yeah. If CJ is working in one department, and he opens up 700 emails, and they're all malware, that he goes to retraining. So it says. Yeah. So what we do is, what we do is, we, we send out, we send out one email a week to each employee. It's like five different emails that it just randomly sends out to each person.
Okay.
I think all of you are on the list, too. So you're all getting my fish testing every week. And if you open it up, it automatically signs you up for additional training. Usually it's only like a five-minute, you know, kind of cheesy animation kind of thing. But, you know, I think.
One time. Two times, you're in trouble.
I think it keeps people on their toes.
No, I agree. I just, I think, because that's one of the easiest ways to get hung up on something. So.
Yeah.
Yeah.
In my defense, I really did think my rich relative died in one of these.
I got, I think I got used to it. Because a couple of times I, I asked Kathy, I'm like, why am I getting these emails from CJ?
Yeah, one time I was like.
And, and being on Office 365 at work and here, and we have other stuff that, behind the scenes, like, I'm like, geez, I'm replacing a lot of emails for what?
Yeah. I mean, we do have a spam filter that catches a lot of the stuff. But, you know, we still like to try to send those to people to get them to click on things. Usually the one, the ones from CJ aren't actually from me. Those are actually.
No, I understand.
Actually from CJ is what you're saying.
Definitely not from CJ.
I'm not asking you, anyone in this room, to buy me gift cards and send them to a random person. I don't do that, just to be clear.
You'd be surprised that, you know, we've actually had that twice. And actually had, and it's really funny, because we had somebody think it was real and actually bought the gift cards. And of course, the story gets around, all the employees left. How dumb can you be? And two months later, an employee comes to me and says, I just got an email. Kathy wants gift cards.
It's easy to be dumb, actually, because if you're on your phone, for example, and I know there's some personal experience, and if the email comes to you, and it's legitimate, and you're like, working with this person, and they refer to you a certain way, and they're like, oh, could you do this? I have a client. And you know the person's in a client meeting. It is very, very easy.
Yeah.
To be like, sure. But then, if you're on your desktop, for example, you can click, there's like a little button that you can click, and you'll see that it'll be like, you know, Party in the USA 2000. Clearly, it's not from the person that it's, you know, initiated the email.
So note to self, when they ask you all your favorite things on Facebook, don't go fill it all out.
Don't fill anything out.
When in doubt, erase it. They'll call if they need you.
So, but Brian and Todd have been doing a really nice job with us on that end of it. But it is, it's amazing, just in the budget and in the different departments and things, just the technology, the software. It's really become, it's, you know, just, we have a, again, like most of our organization, only two people running all the IT. And it's quite a lot of IT, and with the cell phones and the different things, the computers, the home computers, the Zooms. It's, Brian and Todd have really been doing just a tremendous job in upgrading all our technology over the last couple of years through COVID. And we did get a lot of it through COVID funds. But really, I don't know, you guys don't watch your council meetings, but it's really quite impressive, our technology in here, and also in the pavilion, and just keeping up with everything that we have to do with the software and things like that. So they do a really nice job for us.
Thanks, Kathy.
You're welcome.
I'm expecting a bigger raise.
And we have no money.
Somehow the speakers are going now.
You better go find that long, Austin, while Todd, that end up CJ for inheritance.
Any other questions for Brian or Kathy? Now, I'd like to say, go ahead.
Brian, don't come working with the US Marshals, okay? We need you here.
Okay.
Now, the, clearly, the security issue's incredibly important. So thank you for keeping us up to date on those things. The. The, the upgrades to the chambers is nice when people can actually hear us, or we can hear them when they're asking questions too. But, yeah, I, I think the security is the biggest thing, and you have been doing a tremendous job with not a lot of bodies, so thank you. And I think through COVID, things sort of got ramped up very quickly. So, we didn't notice it, and that's when you do a great job, when we don't notice what's going on, so appreciate it.
Right, and just one other thing, again, again, just the security of the computer systems. But the other thing that's been a priority for us is the security of our buildings, as you see. That's, that's a whole different thing now, and again, we're not really used to it, but it's something that we have to do with our, our, our badges, and everything's locked, and, but that's where we are in this day and age. And Brian and his staff and everyone have handled all the transition of that too, so it's, there's a lot to it.
Okay.
Thank you, Brian.
Thanks, Brian, thank you.
And. Yeah, so the only other thing in the Town Manager on C five is that we have two, a B and an O, and that's for our 1928 building. The B is for bonding for $9 million, which we talked about, and the O is $7 million, which would be the ARPA funds. So those would be those two items on page C five for the Town Manager.
Okay.
I ask one other question, the, so the 250,000, if, if 1928 fails, is that unnecessary or?
We usually like to have, I don't know, how, how much money do we have in our town hall account now? Okay, yeah, we probably wouldn't need it for, for this year. We do bank money just in general to do renovations of the town hall, different projects that come along. We've hit most of them now, but we probably would not need that.
Okay.
Even if it did pass, would it push us back at all by not funding it this year? So 1928 passes this referendum, we start moving?
Yeah, we'd probably have some time.
Okay.
Yeah.
Kathy, if the 1928 building referendum does, if it fails, hypothetical situation, could we use the $7 million that's there for, I don't know, a bunch of other things, like line items here?
I would, yes, the council can do almost anything they want with it, but I would say, my recommendation is that if that was the case, we would use it in capital projects, not in the operating budget, but yes.
Because then you wouldn't want to replace the following year for any of the operating expenses?
No, because we'd leave a really large hole in our budget, we'd have to use that, we'd have to find an extra, whatever, $7 million. So I would be recommending if we were going to do, if that, if it, if that's what the council would choose, it would be projects, either big projects or projects out of the capital budget that you would just use that money for.
And even that, you'd just be careful, because you, you'd want to do capital products that are really of a non-recurring nature. So you probably would not want to, for example, something that you're funding every single year in the capital budget, you probably wouldn't want to do that.
So let's use it for the.
You're going to have that hole in the capital budget. You probably would think in terms of fire trucks, which are 20 years out, or something, something like that.
Or the dump truck.
Well, you probably wouldn't do a dump truck, because it's every year, but maybe.
Obviously, you were saying just three there from 1998.
Yeah, or you, yeah, you could do a bunch of them.
You, yeah, if you're not going to be here in 20 years, you don't have to worry about it, so.
Why do you think that?
If the 1928 fails, we still need to have some money for the demolition and the fixing of that area at that point, because that's not been funded.
Right.
So there's, it's not like it's the full seven, there's going to be residual for taking it down.
But we do have, like, just examples on the town side, you know, we have Fire Station Building Committee, that was still something like fire station renovations. We have a Tungusus Mead plan that has to do a, a bunch of work at Tungusus Mead. Those would be the things that I think when our subcommittee had met, at that point, we were looking at longer-term, bigger projects that only, that don't have reoccurring, so you don't have a hole in your budget for it.
But for next year, if we, if we got to that point where we could use, maybe not the entire $7 million, are there, like, things in the budget that you've looked at that we can use?
In the operating budget, no.
In the capital improvement?
Sure, yeah, like I just said, like the Fire Station Building Committee, our group also said Tungusus Mead. I think they talked about sewer treatment, pump stations. Patterson Park pump stations, the Fire Station Building Committee. So those were some of the things that our little subcommittee had talked about.
And then if we were to use that almost $7 million for that, for those projects, then does that increase the entire budget? I mean, like, would it reduce the amount that the taxpayer would ultimately have to?
In the long run, sure. So again, I'll just use Fire Station Building Committee. So if we had, we spent, if the, if we wanted to renovate all our firehouses, which it's planned, and do the boilers and do that, and it costs $7 million, we wouldn't bond for $7 million, which ultimately then would save the taxpayer money for that type of a project.
Right, but I mean, for next year, like, are we talking, are there any things a week?
No.
No?
No.
Other questions? Seeing none.
Well presented.
So, we've gone through everything, so just maybe just have a little bit of a conversation that, you know, we're very close to coming with the operating budget, so I'm, we're almost done with the operating budget. And as I've described, again, my position, unless you tell me otherwise, is that I was going to make some substantial cuts to the, the capital budget. And I figure if the council chooses, we'd go the other way, and you could add things back in. I think instead of going the reverse, we obviously need some capital, the board needs some, we need some. But again, the numbers that I've seen, and like we've talked about, there is going to be a substantial tax increase. And so we need to have strategies, and one of them has got to be, I don't think there's any other way other than with these, really reducing the capital. Or, I mean, there is other ways, you could really reduce expenses extremely, which would really reduce your service levels, or you would have a very high tax burden. So I think we're going to have to do some various things. So, again, my thought was, is that I am going to reduce it, and that if, when we do the capital, if the council wants to add money back in for different things, then we'd go that way.
I think that's a good plan, Kathy, I think we go in with a bare bones capital, knowing how difficult this budget is going to be due to the revaluation, the shift from commercial to residential, trying to keep the tax increase on the residents to as much of a minimum as we possibly can, to try and limit the pain to them in this, I think that's a great start. I don't know where else, you know, you would start, the capital, if we come in with our bare bones capital, and if we feel more comfortable about this budget as we're getting along, which would be somewhat of a miracle if that happened. But then we can always add things into the capital. But I think it'd be great to give us what you consider the bare bones capital.
So the intention of a bare bones capital is to come in somewhere at that 2% that we set at last meeting?
Uh, what, I did the 2% on my operating budget, and then I just, the capital is separate. I'm just, we, what I presented tonight, what was that, Joe, three point?
Was that the 2.5% roughly, where your goal is?
That was, that was 2.5, that was our policy. Gotcha.
What was presented tonight, well, depending upon what the budget came in at, it'd probably be closer to 3%.
Right, and our policy is 2.5%. So I'd, I'd cut that way, way back.
So this one is a fully funded capital? So what we saw tonight?
No, because, well, the board, the board would not typically get all that was presented. So the board would be cut back, but what, how I, how we would typically do it is that we'd come up with that 2.5% and then we proportion it, the town would get X percent, the, the board would get X percent. My side of the budget was what we would typically get, and the, the board was the entire board's capital.
Okay.
Put it in perspective, the capital budget in the current fiscal year that you approved and was adopted at referendum was $3,881,000, and it's pretty much 50/50 town board. The proposed budget that you were tonight between the town and the board, the funding out of the general fund was $3,984,000, so it's about $100,000 more than the current year's adopted budget. And again, it's roughly 50/50.
And if we were to go with that, like, let's say, to referendum, that would be what percentage increase in the?
In the?
Taxes for your average homeowner?
Oh, I don't know, it's probably.
What did we say, the reval alone is 14%, right?
If we went zero, it was 12, if we went with the three expenditure that we typically have, you said 17.
Yeah, so, right, yeah, so it's a.
I just wanted to make sure I heard that number right.
Yeah. Right, yeah, so it's, it's a 12% tax increase with just the revaluation, and so we're aiming to get our expenditures down, and part of it is with the capital, is that the, the, the tax increase was only solely related to the reval, not expenditures. So that's what we're, that's what I'm aiming to do. But we have to do that by, you can't do that without cutting the capital budget substantially.
And in '08, that's basically what we did also, when we were faced with the same situation?
Yes, it's, it's amazing, because.
'08, 12, not in 17, '08 and 12, that's exactly what.
And how did the, how did the following year go? With, with that, with being able to add back capital, were you just playing from behind the entire time, or?
It, it was a different situation, especially in '08, because '08, there was, it was kind of a perfect storm. Very, it's interesting, because I pulled out my presentations and was looking at it, and I almost could use the same presentations, which I am, but there was some differences that were occurring. One is that the state revenue side of the budget was crashing and burning too. So not only back then, where we had a big shift in the, the property values, we also did not, we also lost a lot of revenue. But it was sort of the same situation with utilities were very high. But the other end of the equation is, for whatever reason, the operations side of both the town and board, it was running much higher than what we're running today. So when you were saying 2%, which is difficult for us to get to, it's, but back then, we were, our expenditure side, I was presenting at like 3.5, 3.75%. So again, there was, it was a different kind of an equation. This, our budget this year, if we didn't have the reval, we're actually in very good shape.
I was going to say, it sounds like we could be in reasonably strong shape next year, given what we're.
Yeah, we did, we made some really lot of hard choices back in 2008, because the expenditures were so high. It took a couple of years to recover, and we're going to take a couple of years to recover for this too, with the capital, because you're going to have to build that back up. But I, we're hoping not to, that's why I want to put some money in it, and hopefully, things won't take a real sideways turn, that we don't take five years to recover. But, you know, again, we've talked about it a little bit, part of the strategy is also going to be, we're going to, I'm going to be recommending using fund balance too. And so, again, you're going to have a hole for the fund balance number, you're going to have a hole for the capital budget, which will take us a little time, but I think, you know, we'll, we'll get through it.
And the entire hole is created by the reval and the, our timing, the state's timing for us to do the revalid, the absolutely most inopportune time.
Right.
Not by our choice, this is by state mandate.
Right. Exactly. So we, the next time we meet will be in March, and that will be the, my public hearing on the budget and just how we work. It would be that Tuesday night, we'll do the public hearing, the board will do the public hearing. We'll just have questions from the audience, the council doesn't typically ask any questions at that time. And then Wednesday, the next day, the board will come in, most of my departments will come in on Wednesday. And then Thursday, we'll have my, the ending up of a couple of more departments. And then I'm leaving some time on Thursday, I'm calling it revaluation discussion, and that we can go through, show some of the different things with the reval. One of the things that I think are part of the equation that we have to talk about a little bit, and I think we'll show it, is that the mill rate is coming down, and so if you do have cars, expensive cars especially, your overall tax, because your car taxes are coming down, so Joe and I, and this is what we did back in 2008 too, we've shown some different examples, so even though maybe your tax rate is going up X percent, when you throw your cars in, your overall tax rate may not be as high as that, it would be lower, and it is part of the equation. So we'll do some showing of that also, that, again, it's very individual, and we have like 25 examples of just showing different people's tax rates. And, and so I figure on Thursday, we can go through some of that, so the public can see some of it, you guys can have an understanding. We can also talk a little bit of what I'm calling this hole, Brian, we've talked about that, how that works, when you do have a hole in your budget, and how, and how you have to do that, that would be Thursday. So we'd finish everything on Thursday, then have the revaluation discussion, and then on Saturday, we'd meet and try to set the budget. And then we have Monday and Tuesday open too. But I think that, to my perspective, I think we'll, sorry, I don't think it's going to take that long to go through the municipal side of the budget, because there's nothing in it, to get down, it's really reductions. I think most of the conversation will be spent showing what, what had to be reduced out of the budget to get to 2%, because to keep operations the same, with the same amount of employees, with utilities, again, granted personnel cost, I call them fixed, but they're not necessarily fixed, you could reduce employees. But if you kept it apples to apples, we're probably a 3.4 or 3.5%.
4.8.
Oh, 4.8, and so to get down to 2%, that's all the cuts that we had to make to get to that. So I think that the conversation will be that, and showing you the reductions of service that you will have with, and our goal is to have some reductions of service, obviously, but not to devastate the organization. So that's really what we're aiming to do.
I think one of the conversations has always been, those cuts are not the cuts that are generational cuts. So we can recover from what happens. You know, if there's a hole in anything, it's something that can be refilled in hopefully short order, a year, two years, whatever it might be, as best. But you mentioned something, and we'll get into this on that Thursday you're talking about, which is interesting, the whole thing with the car tax. If the mill rate is coming down, every owner of a car is reducing what they're paying on their car taxes. So that can be a substantial amount of money. I looked through that 2008 number in the descriptions and trying to quantify it. It's obviously difficult, because just like giving an average homeowner in Farmington, everybody's got different cars. Some people have cars from 1998, and some have brand-new car every year. If you get the brand-new car every year, that's a big impact on your tax bill. So whatever your increases on one side gets balanced off. So it, it will be good to give the public some idea as to how to work that out. And when we're doing our calculator, I think on whatever page we have the calculator, we mention the calculator applies to the car also, you can put in what your car is to see what you're saving on your car tax.
Right, right, but, yeah, exactly, exactly. And so, yeah, it's, I think, again, we've, we've gone through this, it's not, it's difficult, but we do have strategies, but I think that you will, you are going to see a significant shift. So, and, and then, that's it.
Okay. Any final questions or comments? All right, so now, we have a motion, a second on the table.
Want me to amend it as a?
Now, would we?
amend our motion to no action for today?
What do we usually, Joe? I just think we just don't.
I think we should just say no action taken, as long as everyone's okay with that, we won't take a vote on this. We'll have no action taken on that, which means we'll go back to it when Kathy comes back with this different numbers. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So no action taken?
Yep, and that's it.
Okay, that's all we have on item E. Next item is executive session, of which we have none. Before we move to adjourn, I will leave you with a quote from Benjamin Franklin, "Waste neither time nor money, but make the best use of both."
Make a motion to adjourn the February 28, 2023 Town Council meeting.
Second. Have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 7:48, we are adjourned.